Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order at seven oh one PM. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Juan Crick.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Kebab Watten.
Present.
Hornback.
Here.
Here.
Peruzzi.
I'm premature.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Corum present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First item we've got today is the minute approval of the July seventh, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none. It's unanimously so ordered. All right. First thing we've got here is our presentations and proclamations. We have a Verge Solar Energy Project here that we've got a presentation on. If you guys want to head on up to the podium here. If we get a motion, make this part of the regular meeting as well.
Support.
Moved and supported. So we'll have them go through the presentation they've got for us here, and then we'll go to questions from council and such from there. So should be situated. Excellent. All right.
Hi. My name is Dick Williams. It's good to be back in front of the city council again tonight, this evening. We've been blessed to be able to work with Dean and his team, especially headed by Tim Beaker and Julie Wilson, on the project that we're going to show you tonight. And we just want to basically make three key points. The first is the fact that we've done our homework. Secondly, our solution will work. And then lastly, it makes sense financially. So we're going to go through those items tonight. Let's see. Okay. Yep. So before we get started, though, I want to tell a quick little story. And does anyone know what it's like to win a gold medal? This girl that you see there, I was blessed to coach her. I was talking to councilman before the meeting. He coached soccer for fifteen years. When my kids were young, I was able, or he coached hockey for fifteen years. I was able to coach my kids through soccer. And she played for my soccer team. And, you know, for kids, it's a big thing if you can make the premier or the select teams. I was just a house rec, rec coach, and my job was to try to help them get better and then make those teams if they went out. Well, when you get about nine years old, you go out for those teams. And she went out the first year. I thought, sure, she'd make the team. She came back and she didn't, she didn't make it, but yet two other girls from my, my team made it. And I told her, oh, you know, that's kind of my fault because I had you back playing sweeper the whole time. I'll move you up so you can start learning the pass and stuff. So the next year, she goes out for the team. And they always have the tryouts, literally, the week before your last game in the spring season to find out if you make these select teams. And she comes up to me after the, the, the game, and she's got big crocodile tears coming down. And I thought she was going to tell me I made the select team. I go, did you make the select team, Allison? She couldn't talk. And then I seen her parents come up behind, and they were crying too, because she had been with me since the time she was four. And at the time, you know, she was ten. And then I remembered that she got into swimming the year before. And every time she hit the pool, she would break the record for her age group. I go, you're going to not do soccer anymore. You're going to concentrate on swimming, right, Allison? And she's got a smile on her face. And I said, yeah, I said, that's good. And I got down on one knee, and I gave her a hug. And this is the honest to God truth. I said, Allison, don't cry. Someday, you're going to win the gold medal for the USA in swimming. And so then, fast forward, the London Olympics in two, two, twenty twelve, she goes to the Olympics, and their family goes to my church. So our church did a notebook where you put a note in there, and I wrote a note out. I said, Allison, eleven years ago, a little girl came up to me, and she quit my soccer team. And I told her she was going to win the gold medal. Now go win that gold medal. So what does she do? She wins three gold medals. And she comes back from that Olympic with three gold medals, a silver and a bronze. And this picture that you see there was like, I was taking my younger daughter, who was on the team with her, to just congratulate her. But there was literally a thousand people or something. They were trying to get her autograph. And I go, I go to my daughter. I'm not waiting in line. I'm not. Let's just go over here. And she goes, Dad, you're not going to go take cuts in front of all those people, are you? And I go, no, no. Let's go over. There's her mom and dad. So I'm literally talking to her mom and dad. And Allison comes off the, you know, platform and, and, and puts that gold medal around my neck. And then, then, then I got all misty eyed, and then she went back up. She gave me a hug. And then her dad, I said, does she remember me telling her she was going to win that gold medal? He goes, oh, yeah, she does. He goes, you got to come over and see her scrapbook. She put a little thing in there about it. And then, two weeks after you told her that, she got a bazooka bubble gum comic with a fortune in it that said, someday you will be on a US Olympic team. And so I tell that story just because what we're trying to help the city here is to help you feel like you want a gold medal with the gold that we're going to provide with this program. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've accomplished thus far. And then Tyler, my engineer, Tyler Grant is here. He's the one who worked on that project from an engineering standpoint. He'll get into the energy use. He has site plans of each site with what the solar will look like. And then he'll turn it back over to me. I'll go into grants that we're able to get for this project and how it will be funded from a financing standpoint. Then we'll talk about economic benefits for the city and then next steps. So this is a list of the journey of how we got here. Again, we wouldn't, wouldn't have gotten here without the help of Dean and Tim and Julie. But there's a lot of work that literally started about a year ago, going through a number of different things. And these are just the high points that are listed there to show you that we've done a lot of homework. We've had a lot of meetings. Originally, we were just doing a project that concentrated on the Kennedy Rec Center and the wastewater treatment plant, which are your two largest energy users. But then Dean had asked us to add the Veterans Library and the Westfield Community Center to the project. So we did that, and we had to do more work after that. So that kind of gives you that. Now I'm going to turn it over to Tyler, and he's going to get into a high level description of the energy usage as well as the site plans.
Hello, and thanks for having us tonight. Really quickly, my name's Tyler Grant. I've been an engineer here with Verge for about three years and in the construction industry for about seven. So as Dick mentioned, we took a look at four facilities, the wastewater treatment plant, the Kennedy Rec Center, Westfield Center, as well as the Veterans Library. And those blue bars that you can see there represent the combined energy usage by month for the, those four facilities. Can see it ranges between roughly four hundred thousand and five hundred thousand kilowatt hours per month, with just under six million kilowatt hours of usage per year and a little under seven hundred thousand dollars in electrical spend per year. If you look at the green bars on the graph, that is with, with this project, with the proposed solar is going to offset. So you can see it's about two point one million kilowatt hours, which is about a third of the utility offset there, and would generate over two hundred thousand dollars in the first year in electrical savings. So the first site is the wastewater treatment plant. Here, we're looking at roughly an eight hundred kilowatt ground mounted array. It would offset about forty-three percent of the twenty twenty-four electrical usage of the site. For the Kennedy Rec Center, we're looking at a, covering the roof with a roof mounted array, rough totaling just shy of six hundred and fifty kilowatts, with a small covered canopy for the bus parking there in the top left corner of the image. Here, you can see it's about a thirty percent offset of the total electricity used in twenty twenty-four. Also in the bottom left hand side, you can see the energy production there for the solar array. You can see it significantly less in the winter, but ramps up during the summer months. And then the, this is a combined image of the Veterans Library and the Westfield Center. So the large array down the center of the parking lot would be tied into the library, and that would offset about the, the total building's energy load. And then the array on the left hand side, the smaller one, is tied into the Westfield Center, and that would also offset about the entire facility's electrical load there. This would cover roughly eighty-two parking spaces. The arrays would have gutters, downspouts, underdecking, and lighting. So it would stay waterproof during a rain event, and as well as collecting any, any snow and providing shade for any covered parking as well. As part of this project, we would also include some solar monitoring. This would be live, real-time production of total arrays, so you could see what they're actually producing on a day-by-day, week-by-week, month-by-month, and also in real time. This is twofold, one, so you can show and see what the solar is actually producing, but also for us to use as measurement and verification for the energy guarantee that we're providing. The nice thing here is it also will have alarms and notification to reduce downtime. If you aren't tracking and seeing the, the system there monitoring live production, if you had an inverter go out or part of the array stop working, you could potentially have to wait and see that reflected in the bill, and you would have lost all that production in the meantime. The other nice thing here is we can tie this to a web-based URL with a customizable dashboard that you can let the public see. So you can make it as sophisticated or as simple as you'd like, while also featuring things such as what those carbon offsets are, the number of cars reduced off the road, the number of trees planted, the equivalent of the tons of coal or gas burned, oil. It's, it's really nice to go ahead and show the public what that's actually doing in real time. And with that, I will turn it back over to Dick.
Thanks, Tyler. This gets into the fact that our solution will work, and it would, it's the Inflation Reduction Act that was introduced in twenty twenty-two was the federal government realized how much solar was working and how much we needed it. They actually incentivized public sector entities that don't, don't pay federal taxes to actually get a tax credit for this, which is like getting a grant. So the way that tax credit works is there's a base investment tax credit of thirty percent, and then you get a domestic content adder of ten percent when you use USA domestically made, you know, products like the panels and the inverters, which yours are going to qualify for those first two categories. The last category is the energy low-income community adder. That's additional ten percent for each one of those, but we're not, we didn't include that here. But, you know, there's a possibility that you could get that because, you know, it's a, it's a, it's predicated on that you had a coal power plant in your community that shut down after two thousand nine. And obviously, DTE shut that down. So we haven't reflected that in any of these numbers because we wanted to be conservative. So we just used the forty percent. And then the other thing we wanted to show is like, you know, our company is headquartered in Phoenix, Arizona, but we have an office in Royal Oak. Prior to coming with to Verge, I was with Honeywell, and I worked with the city for, you know, several years, coming up on thirty years now. One of the things that Honeywell wouldn't let us do, though, was solar, which was part of the reason why, after forty years, I decided to come over here at Verge, and we opened a Royal Oak office. And since then, we've done, we're doing right now all of Jackson County's facilities. This is an array that's shown right there for their youth center, which is a youth detention center. It's a ground mount system. We've also done all of Calhoun County facilities that are already operating. We're just wrapping up all of Delhi Township's, where we do, we did all their facilities. We're also doing the city of Huntington Woods as well with that. So I want to show you a few pictures to show you that this does work. And this is, this shows you Calhoun County for the roof mounted system. The picture on the left is their justice center, and, which is comprised of their court building as well as their jail. And then the building on the right is their human services building. So you can see that those panels have been operating now for about a year and a half since we, we put them in. This is examples of what we're putting in at the Veterans Library and your Westfield Center of carport shade structures. They will be high enough so that your snow removal trucks will easily be able to traverse in and out of there. And, you know, that will cover the parking shades to give all your citizens, when they park their car under there in the event of rain or snow or those conditions, you know, safer and at the same time generating energy. So from a financial standpoint, this is where it makes sense financially to, this also includes a roof, replacing the roof at the Kennedy Center, which is included in this project. And we'll be putting down a white material, so we get a bi-facial panel that will get double the production off of the roof as well as off of the, you know, the sun. So that, that's a, a nice way to do that. But it's a ten million, five hundred thousand dollar estimated project cost. The Inflation Reduction Act through that forty percent will give you a money back of two point eight million that you'll get back. And that, the way that comes back is once these projects are energized, which means turned on, then the year after, you file a return. So this would be likely you would file in twenty twenty-seven. And then they would, you know, give you a check back for two point eight million dollars. The net project cost then is seven point seven million, and which we would finance that in a lease that would be four point four or five percent as it was projected about a month ago when we got that rate. And then this total savings is just over eighteen million dollars over thirty years, which these panels are warranted for thirty years. So they actually have a rated life of up to forty years, but we just projected out the savings for thirty years. And so your net positive cash flow is about almost six point three million that the city would realize from a positive. So conceptually, instead of paying the money to the utility company, you're putting the money back in the infrastructure that you need for the city to continue your commitment to be fiscally responsible and environmentally responsible. This kind of gets into the, how this IRA helps stimulate, why they did it was to benefit communities as well, stimulate things like creating jobs, which, you know, is about fifty-seven jobs created. And then the carbon reduction, you know, from carbon dioxide is equivalents of forty-four, over, you know, forty-four thousand tons of CO2, or the equivalent of saving over almost forty-three million pounds of coal, or the equivalent of, of not using, you know, almost eighty-nine thousand barrels of oil, or planting, you know, one point three million, you know, trees. So that's from a, from a sustainability standpoint. So what the next steps are, is we're here tonight. One of the things that that big, beautiful bill that was signed requires is that we, that you have a contract. In order to get the existing rules, safe harbor, you have to have a signed contract this year of twenty twenty-five, and you have to have it under construction. So, you know, you're, we've been working on this for a year. So we've submitted a, a contract that allows you to, you know, capitalize on that. And then we would do the final engineering once that's approved, hopefully in August. To do the final engineering through that through September, and then we would need a notice to proceed to start the construction. We would order all the equipment, the panels at that time, which those are projected to be about a sixty-day lead time, so that we can actually get the materials and start construction yet this year to show that you're under construction. The job would be completed in October of twenty twenty-six, and then in twenty twenty-seven, you would file for your direct pay, which is just like filing for your income taxes. So I started out the presentation tonight telling you the story about the, you know, the gold medal. And this is kind of like the city of Trenton's gold, that you're in a gold medal that you would get, you know, eighteen point two million dollars of savings over the next thirty years, utilizing federal funding that's available of two point eight million to help fund the project. You also have now backup power to give your facilities resiliency. And the, in the, in the instance, like I know, back at, last year, the Kennedy Center had a power outage that occurred. And had those panels been in there on the roof, they would still had electricity being produced from the sun, not having to worry about that transmission line that failed. So that will give you resiliency in your community, especially when you look at things like the library, where kids are reading and your citizens are, you know, that, as well as the Westfield Center. And you're putting a lot of money into that to rehab that and bring that up to standards. That will just give the resiliency that that can continue to operate, you know, if, even if the power went out from, from, you know, DTE. It will give you shade protection for your citizens, for their, their vehicles, as well as it will give you shade protection on your roofs where the roof mounts. Because once you have those panels up there, you saw those pictures, you can see easily that this, it provides more protection from the sun not beating down on that and destroying the life of that roof material. So it actually extends your roof life for about a twenty percent longer life. And then, again, the environmental, the city has been committed to being environmentally responsible for many, many years of me working here. And this just continues the commitment that you already made. And then obviously, fiscally responsible is any time you can take money that you're spending, that you would be giving to the, you know, somebody else like the power company, and use that money to put it back this way, and then actually create a nest egg for yourself, that's fiscal responsibility. And then lastly, because we are guaranteeing the savings here to fund it, that every year, we have to make the, produce the kilowatts. If we don't, then we have to write a check back to the city. So it safeguards the city in making sure that this is a sound investment. So with that, that ends the presentation and open it up for if there's any questions.
Great. We'll open it up here to Councilwoman Bunckreks.
Yeah, I think, Dick, it sounds like a great idea. I know you've always come forward with the city, and you've always produced a good savings for us. And, and just whatever you do has been right for the city. So I trust this project. I've been wanting to go solar for years. And now that we're redoing the buildings in the community, I really think this is a great step forward. So I'm glad, I'm glad to see this whole presentation. I'm all for it.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kebab Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So talk to me a little bit about maintenance of these panels. You know, we're a winter state. You know, I've seen some products before where they're designed to, to drive on, especially on the solar farms, and clean off the panels and do some cleaning. I mean, what kind of cleaning has to be done to these? I mean, any kind of special equipment that needs to be used to remove snow off of them, or what, what does that look like?
The maintenance is, you know, pretty much more, more for the inverters, where you check out the amperage readings and the connections and the voltages and stuff like that. The panels, because of the amount of rain that we get in here, and because of the tilt on the panels, whether they're on the roof, whether they're in the car, or like in Julie's case, at the wastewater plant, they're going to have a tilt. And every time that, that, that comes, you know, the rain or, or the snow or the ice, it's, it's essentially going to wash those panels. Like in Arizona, where I work, I work there six months a year as well. But they have all those dust storms, and they have to actually clean those and with like a, you know, a sprayer thing because they hardly get any water out there. But, you know, they're pretty reliable by the, that's one of the reasons why they're warranted for thirty years. But we will leave a supply of those in case, you know, something would happen, like if a huge hailstorm came through and hit, hit them and did a damage to them. They're, they're rated up to a certain amount of, you know, force impact. But if something did ever like that happen, you'd have a few panels that you could just easily swap out at, at that point.
If I could add a little bit to that, we don't have this designed for any cleaning being required in the winter. The, the panels will get covered with snow. As you saw there, the production was significantly less in the winter. And so what will happen there is that snow will sit on there for a while. Eventually, the panel will heat up enough to where that snow starts to slide down. But there's a factor called soiling that we have modeled in the production, which essentially accounts for, hey, it's going to have snow on at X amount of percentage based on the weather data in the area. And so it just won't be producing during that time. That's why it was so much less during the winter. There's not, no, there's no ongoing cleaning or maintenance the way we have this designed.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to further elaborate on your question with what he said there, because someone might be thinking about that. Especially the carport ones, they're going to have gutters and downspouts. So that, let's say you did have snow or ice, you don't have to worry about it sliding down. If one of the, your citizens comes out of the library or comes out of the Westfield Center, and it starts to melt, it will actually go right into the gutter. It's not going to fall on someone's head. So we have that safety factor built into it as well.
Sounds good. Thank you.
What is the real ROI on this?
So the real ROI, as far as you mean the number of years that it pays off?
Yeah.
It's just under twenty years.
Okay. And as far as maintenance contracts, what, do you recommend companies? Do you maintain it? Maintain it? We sign a contract?
Yeah. We can do the maintenance if you would like. As I said, it was just, it's mainly going to be checking the inverters. The inverters are warranted for like, up to twenty years, and then the panels are warranted to up to thirty years. So there's, you know, you just have to, because we're going to be monitoring the dashboard, we're going to know if something happens, like if, like an inverter would go out or something to go check it. Your existing staff can be trained on how to go check that and what's, but if you want to call us in, we can either do it on a time and material. We have technicians that can do it. Like, for instance, Delhi Township, they wanted us to just include a maintenance package. So we just included, you know, for all their facilities where we're going to do the maintenance.
And how long is the warranty for currently? Fire service on the product?
The, 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 the warranty on, is twenty years on the inverters and thirty years on the panels. So it's pretty, pretty sufficient warranty. We're going to leave some extra panels, you know, extra ones, so that if something like unforeseen happens, like I mentioned with a hail.
Now, how does this impact the city's insurance as far as they have to maintain insurance rates and stuff for their buildings? How does this impact that?
I, I don't believe that, other than insuring those components as part of your building, it, usually I think they're with a, I think you're with an MMRA or something. You just talk to them and make sure that those are added, you know, included in the policy. But it doesn't have a, a negative effect on your insurance.
And the last question is, do you sell back the energy to DTE? And can DTE pull energy from these? That's the next question.
Yeah. So you, DTE has what's called a net metering program, so that if we overproduce, the meter will spin both ways so that you're, we're producing more than what the buildings are using. It goes back to DTE. And then they do a true-up on your bill every month with how much you actually didn't use that went back to them. And then they, like, for instance, like that project I showed, the slides for the youth center, they actually got money back every, and they're on a different utility, consumers. But they actually, after it went out and it got energized, they actually got like four thousand dollars back the first few months. But they actually, after it went out and it got energized, they actually got like $4,000 back the first few months. They weren't even paying a power bill. So they were thrilled about that.
Well, thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you.
You've answered most of my questions. I decided one about, there's no battery storage at all? If you're feeding it back to the grid, is that where, why you can't do both?
Yeah, we didn't put in battery storage because we tried to, uh, right-size the system. So based on your current demands, especially through your high-energy users, the wastewater plant and the Kennedy Center, um, we want them to size it so the amount of energy that you have to go back to the grid with those two facilities is probably going to be a small, small amount. But the amount that's for the Veterans Library and the Westfield Center, because we're offsetting pretty much almost the entire utility bill, there's going to be times where that energy goes back to DTE. So they'll be doing that net metering a lot there and it will be reflected on your bill.
Is that an option like in the future for those two facilities? Obviously not. It wouldn't be beneficial at the wastewater treatment center. But at the Westfield to add like a battery storage component later? If we saw that we were.
Yeah, you could always add a battery storage whenever you wanted to. Uh, we didn't, we didn't put that in because that's, when you do a battery storage, there's also a big, that's a lot more maintenance that you've got to do on that. And then you've got to have a facility that's secure. You've got to have air conditioning in there because if that heats up too much and all that kind of stuff. So it's like, it, financially, it, we didn't think that was a real good investment at this point, but it might be in the future.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilman Benedetti?
This question is probably going to be for him, but also Tim. So when we do this at the library, Westfield Center, how many spots are we losing? Because I mean, there's times that there's never enough parking and I know I don't want to be that guy, but.
It's Tyler answered as we're walking over here. Uh, we won't lose any spots. So the covering would cover the existing spots that are there.
But you're not taking any out for the supports, anything like that?
No, not at all.
That all?
Yeah, I'm good.
Cool. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. I've been looking forward to it. Um, and I actually did some research on your company too. So you've done about 13 airport projects?
Yes.
And?
We did Jackson County's airport was one of them.
Um, and then a lot throughout the Midwest.
Saginaw's Midlands Airport, MBS Airport.
And then you've done multiple schools in different states.
Yes.
Um, and then you just finished an, uh, a ge- geothermal energy system in Jackson within the last year.
Yeah.
So you have, um, a large amount of, uh, processes that you all have been doing. And I really feel that you're a good fit for our city.
Thank you. Jackson County, I actually sent Tim because the local TV, that's actually where I grew up in Jackson. Um, but they asked me to do a, a news story. So I sent Tim, uh, on his cell phone, I sent him the, the stories in case he wanted to see it. So it was just, it's actually a $36 million project, which we're putting in geothermal at two of their facilities and solar in literally all the rest of them. A lot of their facilities are not, I mean, they're ancient compared to the city of Trenton's facilities. Yours are way, way newer. Um, so they needed a lot of deferred maintenance things done with their heating, ventilating, and air conditioning systems. And that same tax credit, um, is available for geothermal. So I know that, for instance, and I don't know if this is a play or not, but like, I know you're building that new public safety, uh, you know, and I don't know how that budget comes in, but it might be something to consider to add geothermal because you can get that same percentage of the 30 to 50% if you use, you know, uh, if you put in geothermal there for that new facility to help offset the cost of putting in that new HVAC that's going in there because it's a renewable, it's considered a renewable energy source. So you could, you could at least look into that. It might be something financially, if the mechanical and electrical part of that project, let's say was, you know, $10 million and you could do it with geothermal and all of a sudden you get $5 million or $4 million back from that, that would be another win for the city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you guys again very much, uh, for not only the presentation, but for everything that you've done in the lead up to this. So obviously, you know, the Honeywell project, uh, was really fruitful for us over at the Rink. Um, so we're excited what we can put together here for the community. So thank you guys a ton. Look forward to it.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Okay. Moving along here. So next up on the agenda, we have public comment regarding items on today's agenda. Uh, this portion of public comment, we've got reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda. And we'll have another opportunity for all of our public comment, uh, later on in the meeting. For anyone wishing to speak, please begin with your name and address, direct all questions through me. Um, and please let me your comments to five minutes. We'll keep moving. Uh, next up, I am asking for this body's approval of my reappointments of Richard Hidzinski to the Historical Commission, Linda Kell and Mary Ann Robinson to the Recreation Commission, and Mark Enright and Christopher Lepart to the Traffic Safety Commission, all for terms expiring August 1st, 2028.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Benedetti?
Yes.
Cabot?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Obstein?
Von Kriks?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you all. Uh, next up, well, we could actually probably do these two together here. Um, we've got two resignations, um, from commissions here, from Shelby Margerton, uh, from the Downtown Development Authority, and John Scott from the Zoning Board of Appeals. If we could get a motion to, uh, receive and place these on file and then send them a letter thanking them for their service. So, uh, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Uh, we'll go to our 33rd District Court, uh, fines, costs, and fees for June of 2025. Uh, we'll go to our court delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved, received, and placed on file the fines, costs, fees, June 2020, 2025, submitted by the 33rd District Court, showing the city owing $1,523.76.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Uh, I'll take this next one here. We've got our annual meeting notice from the Michigan Municipal League, um, asking, uh, for a motion to designate myself as the representative and Councilman Cabot as the alternate, um, for the annual meeting, uh, for the Michigan Municipal League to be held, uh, September 17th to 19th, 2025, um, if we plan on attending the meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Just FYI, I know I won't be able to make it, but Councilman, if you are, um.
Talk offline.
Yep. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Uh, we've got two items from our controller now. Uh, Ms. Cooper, the first being the 2024 Municipal Employees Retirement System Annual Actuarial Valuation.
Uh, yes, thank you. So I received our, um, annual actuarial valuation for our MERS pension, um, as of December 31st, 2024. So our plan is now 73% funded, which is a 2% increase over last year. Um, and that's calculated as a percentage of our assets over our liabilities. Um, so our unfunded liability is 12,918,862, um, which is a almost 1.3 decrease from last year. Um, so we continue to make our 2.5, um, million, million-dollar payment, uh, that is good through June 30th of 2030. Um, so just looking to move to receive and place on file the December 31st, 2024, MERS Annual Actuarial.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Joe. And then next we've got the Constellation Natural Gas Contract.
Uh, yes. So our contract with Constellation ends October 31st of 2025. Um, I am requesting to extend the contract, um, for four years at a fixed rate of .389 per therm, um, which would cover from November, um, 2025 to October of 2029. Um, so doing so offers long-term budget stability and protection against market volatility. Um, this rate is competitive based on current and projected natural gas prices, um, which remains acceptable to geopolitical tensions, weather events, um, and supply constraints. Um, locking in at this rate now ensures predictable energy costs and mitigates the risk of rising prices in the coming years. Constellation has a strong track record of reliable service and customer support, making them a dependable partner for our energy needs. Um, so this rate was as of Thursday, so it could possibly have changed by a few cents. Um, but, um, just looking to approve of the four-year contract with Constellation for November 2025 to October 2029.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Joe. Uh, next up from our DPS Director, Mr. Sargent, uh, we have our Westfield Center Structural Repairs Contract Award.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the municipal building improvement bond, the city recently went out for public bids for the structural repairs needed at the Westfield Center. Bids were received on June 24th, 2025 at City Hall. Only one bid was submitted, therefore it was open and read aloud at the July 7th council meeting. That bid was submitted by Pullman SST, who specializes in structural preservation. Fishbeck reviewed the bid and based on prior work experience with this company, they recognize their ability to perform the necessary work on this project. Based on Fishbeck's recommendation, I am requesting authorization to award the Westfield Center Structural Repairs Contract to Pullman SST in the amount of $585,850 and further request a 10% contingency for any unforeseen issues that arise during construction.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Kevin. All right, we've got, uh, for two items here from our Parks and Recreation Director, first being the Kennedy Recreation Center Scoreboard and Time Clock Replacement.
Thank you, Mayor. The Kennedy Recreation Center has received a quote from MI Custom Signs, our local Daktronic scoreboard and time clock vendor. Uh, that is what all the other, uh, portions of scoreboards in the facility are. Uh, the proposal includes a purchase of one new scoreboard for the back arena at a cost of $9,750. Additionally, the quote includes pricing for three new time clocks, uh, one for each arena, which serve as curfew clocks to notify skaters when their session time has ended. Because of our existing clocks and controllers are already Daktronic's brand, uh, no new control units or additional replacement parts are required. The new equipment will be integrated seamlessly with our current system. We have opted to forego the $750 delivery only option, uh, which you'd see in the quote, and instead selected the $2,500 delivery and installation package to ensure proper setup. Total expenditure is $22,035 to be funded from the Building Improvement Account.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruzzi?
Tim, when do you think that this project would be completed by?
Um, it probably, if I had to guess, somewhere in September.
Okay, so it's relatively soon. That's good. All right, thanks.
Let's see, and, uh, nothing else? Uh, and unanimously so ordered. Um, we've got a late item here as well, also from Tim. Uh, we've got the transfer of the lease for Pro, for Pro Shop Place.
Thank you again, Mayor. The current leaseholder of Playmaker Pro Shop located at the Kennedy Recreation Center has submitted a request to transfer their lease agreement to a new party, uh, Mr. Robert Brooks. To proceed, to proceed, approval and direction from the City Council and the mayor are required to authorize a city attorney and recreation department to negotiate the terms of a new lease agreement with Mr. Brooks. Once negotiated, the final lease agreement will be presented to council and mayor for formal review and approval of prior execution. Approval of this request will allow for a smooth transition of business operations while ensuring the continued service to patrons at the Recreation Center.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruzzi, and then we'll go to Councilman Cabot.
Do we know what kind of background Mr. Brooks has had as far as business adventures of this sort?
Uh, so Mr. Brooks currently owns, uh, the company is called Pond of Dreams out of Lincoln Park. Um, it's a, it's kind of a resale of equipment, of pro equipment. Um, he has committed to basically maintaining and also trying to step up the operations that are existing at the, at the recreational Pro Shop right currently.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Cabot.
So, Tim, just to be clear, so we're going to transfer the lease over to this, uh, Mr. Brooks? And then we're, um, and then that's going to remain, that he's taking over the remaining term?
So the, the current lease extends to September of 20, I believe, oh, let me rephrase that. August 31st of '26, that is the current lease. He has expressed interest in extending that lease, um, or creating a new lease moving forward so that he's making a larger commitment.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as I'm sure he's negotiated some buyout with the current equipment that is inside the facility, uh, from the current leasing. Um, so that's where we're at right now. Uh, basically what we were looking for is he would be, he would be taking over the current contract and then asking for your permission to also negotiate a new contract moving forward.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm good.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, Councilman Benedetti, I think you have, uh.
I do.
A late item here, yeah.
I do have another late item. I make a motion to hold a closed session of council immediately following tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing litigation.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Cabot?
Yes.
Hornbeck?
Yes.
Peruzzi?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rezepa?
Yes.
Von Kriks?
Yes.
Benedetti?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you all. So we'll get started on the closed session right after, uh, the council chamber is here, so don't go anywhere. Um, Councilman Benedetti, we'll have you, uh, keep, uh, the rest of going here.
Okay.
Disbursements and statements and reports.
Moved to approve the authorized disbursement, July 21st, 20, July 21st, 2025 in the amount of $981,837.29.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered.
Moved to receive and place on file the following reports. Financial summary, January 30th, 2025. Scheduled investment cash on hands, June 30th, 2025. Downtown Development Authority minutes, June 12th, 2025. Historical Commission minutes, June 9th, 2025. Library Governing Board minutes, May 7th, 2025. Retire Health Care Benefit Plan Board Meeting Minutes, April 16th, 2025. Traffic Safety Commission Minutes, March 2025 and May of 2025. Fire Department Monthly Report for June of 2025 and the Police Department Monthly Report, June of 2025.
Report.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none as unanimously so ordered. Bless you.
Thank you.
Uh, you deserve a drink of water after that one. All right, uh, we'll go to other council business now. I did not, uh, have anything further this evening at least. Um, so we'll get started tonight, uh, with Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I'd like to congratulate my nephew, who was married this evening, uh, to his beautiful bride, uh, Michael and Samantha and the mayor, actually married them here in chambers, uh, 5 o'clock this afternoon. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great.
That was funny. Councilwoman Buncocks, I did not know that I was marrying their nephew until this, I was, until literally walking in after the fact too, or else I would have made a few more jokes about it. So, uh, Councilwoman Buncocks.
Oh, yeah. Um, I'd just like to thank our police and fire department. Uh, I heard some great things about them leading the, uh, motorcycle ride last weekend. And I just, you know, got a lot of compliments on, you know, our city showing up and doing what they did for the motorcycles. So, the warriors, the wounded. So, thank you so much for doing that. And also I just wanted to announce tonight, um, tomorrow, the petitions are due for council to run for reelection or election. And, um, I am announcing that I am running for reelection for four more years. I've been here 32 years and I absolutely love what I do. And I just want to let the, you know, public know that we are running up here and that we have had so many great projects coming forward that, um, you know, there's things that we've done in the last four years to get to where we are. And, uh, actually the Virgi and the solar projects, a great thing that I've been interested in. And, uh, renewing all the, uh, beautiful buildings that we're going to do in this community for our police and fire and DPW, Westfield, everything. And I'm just so excited to be a part of that plan. We've worked so hard to get where we are, to get McClaus Steel down, Riverside Hospital, so many things, get the bond passed. And, uh, I still know that I love this job and I want to be a part of it. So I just wanted to let the residents know, I've had a lot of people calling me wondering, because I wasn't sure at first, and wondering if I'm going to run for office. And yes, I am. I love this town and I want to continue. So I just want to put that out there for everybody to know that, uh, you know, when you love something, you got to keep it up. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Benedetti?
Oh, Mayor, thank you. Um, first off, I want to say it was a great presentation tonight from Virgi. I appreciate that. You guys did a great job. Um, you're right, uh, I wasn't here when we did some of the Honeywell projects, but yes, it saved money and that is our job, is trying to figure out to save money around here. So we appreciate that and I hope there are things we can look at in the future with the new buildings going in. On the other side of it, I know that we have not talked about this much. Tim mentioned a little bit. But there's a gentleman in the audience, Mr. Ackerman and Mr. Creach sitting at the table. So I don't think anybody's thanked you guys. It took a while, but at least you grabbed it, ran with it. And finally, Riverside is starting to look like it should have about ten years ago. I know that we had problems with the owner and the court system. Welcome to Wayne County, welcome to the state of Michigan, however you want to put it. But we are finally getting where we wanted to be. And I think you two need to be thanked for that because you took it and you didn't stop. Alan, you've been here how many years now doing this? Seven. Seven years. And it was a fight the whole way. And I appreciate that. Yes. I know the residents have put up with a lot over there. We appreciate what they put up with over there. I know the dust has been different lately, but it's getting there. In a year from now, you guys all look at it and go, well, it looks better than it did last year. So I do appreciate that. So thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
Not much tonight, just last night, the T B A, the Trenton Baseball and Softball Association wrapped up their season with a nice pool party at Kennedy, which was well-attended and everyone had a great time. I just want to thank D P W and Parks and Rec for maintaining those fields all year and making sure all the little ones were kept safe and were no terrible holes or anything in the field that sometimes other people like to get in there and play. But they did a great job and it was a really great season. So thank you very much. And also very excited for the solar project. I have solar panels in my house. I highly recommend them. They have allowed me to keep my air conditioning running against my husband's better judgment. So definitely a good thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Peruzzi?
I would just like to thank the gentlemen for the presentation. Thank you for taking the time and welcoming all the questions that we had. Appreciate it. As far as that goes, Mayor, Mr. Creach, Mr. Beaker, thank you for bringing us to council. This looks like a very well-worth project and I'm excited about it. So thank you very much. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Cabotan?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just, I'd like to echo Councilman Peruzzi's comments about the solar panels. Look forward to seeing more and looking a little bit deeper into the topic and seeing how it's going to fit into Trenton. And it's definitely a benefit to, you know, look into these things and see where it can, and help us out and be innovative. So I look forward to that. And other than that, the only other thing is a couple of things going on in Elizabeth Park here coming up pretty soon. We have Jazz Fest coming on Saturday and Sunday, August second and third. So check that out and be prepared for lots of visitors in Trenton. And also, if you haven't been down to the park lately, Wayne County DPS is out there doing some improvements to the roadways out there. There's some paving projects going on right now to the, to the main driving area of the park. If you're out there, just give them a little bit of room. There are lane shifts over there. There's a lot of work going on. Give the crews some room to work and, and be safe and go home so they can see their families tonight too. So other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll go to our other elected officials now. Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us?
I'll also put out a reminder, deadline to turn in petitions for city council to be placed on the November fourth general election is tomorrow in the clerk's office by four P M. And our next regular council meeting will be on Monday, August fourth, at seven P M.
Thank you. Madam Assessor, oh, you already have to hurry. Madam Assessor?
Hi, I would like to let everybody know that our July border review is meeting tomorrow at nine A M. Typically, they're just for qualified heirs, but they also do hear hardship appeals. So if you are a family where you are in hardship or low income, you can call my office and see if you can qualify. If, if it's, time is of the essence for tomorrow, but we also have a December border review.
All right, Treasurer, don't see Mike. Anything? All right, nothing from the Treasurer's Office tonight. Anywhere department heads have anything? Hope we don't get stuff. All right, we'll go to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, I'd ask that you be in with your name and address. Please direct all questions through me and would ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. I'll go to anyone in person first than those on Zoom, but I don't think we have anyone there right now.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Selena Peters. My address is two three six two Pine Tree Drive. I just wanted to introduce myself. I am a Trenton resident, working-class mother of two beautiful little girls that came with me here tonight. Smart, kind, and beautiful inside and out. I like Star Wars. I'm in a book club. I like taking vacations with my family. But I'm also running for Trenton City Council this November. What sets me apart, I think, is my ability to listen and to advocate for everyone. My eagerness to learn about local government and in turn show others the benefits of joining more in the community and learning how it works. I may not have years of experience in government, but I do have over thirty years of life experience that has led to this moment. I want to thank the council and the mayor for making all the improvements in Trenton. It has been wonderful living here. I definitely appreciate everything that you all have been doing. I've been watching and it is just wonderful. You guys are doing really well. But it's also my goal to continue with the progress. I think I would make a good asset to the council. If you wanted to learn more about me and my run, I have a Facebook and an Instagram. It is Selena Peters for Trenton City Council. And I'm happy to meet all of you and I hope I can meet with you soon. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for coming, Ms. Peters. Appreciate it. All right, do we have anyone else looking to speak for public comment? Not seeing any on Zoom. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, support that. Moved and supported for adjournment at seven fifty-four. Don't go far. We'll start our closed session here. Mayor, are we doing it here? Yeah.